...with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alt?
Here.
Mr. Beistel? Mr. Colero?
Here.
Mr. Frye?
Here.
Mrs. Love?
Here.
Mr. Polakowski?
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes? Mrs. Shipley? Your... Mr. Bens?
Here.
Kaylee Brosas? Your... Charles Eckert here.
Let the record show that both Mrs. Rhodes and Mr. Beistel telephoned to indicate they wouldn't be able to be here. I'm pleased to introduce Charles and Kaylee to you this evening. They will be with us every regular board meeting from now until the end of the year unless they have something else going on. And I told them I was gonna put them on the spot and ask them to tell us a little bit about themselves, who they are, what they do, what their interests are, what their future plans are. So, Charles, since you got here first tonight, I'll let you go first.
Hi, I'm Charles Eckert. I'm currently in the class of 2017 as your president. I'm actively involved in scouting movement just by 60 percent across Pennsylvania. I'm a marching band. I'm also working with Mistico, the Royal United Nations, and Montreux. I'm also the NHS secretary and treasurer of the National Honor Society. And soon I'm hoping to pursue a career in public policy.
Thank you, sir. Kaylee?
I'm Kaylee Brosas. I am his vice president of the class of 2017. I'm the president of Hawaii Club that has evolved from Mr. Fanning. And I am president of National Honor Society. And I'm next year a member of the Westminster College.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Bensy, you have two other presidents here, so...
Citizens comments?
I have no comment cards this evening.
Thank you. Minutes?
Yes, it's recommended that the board approve the August 4th planning session minutes and the August 11th voting meeting minutes.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero with two absent. Business and finance, bills payable, treasurers report?
Right, we do not have a treasurers report at this time, so we will recommend that the board approve the bills payable for August 2016, please.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Colero, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frye, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Bens?
Yes, motion passes seven zero with two absent. Whole business, facility study?
We'd entertain a motion by voice vote to table the facility study until we receive information on the investment grade audit, please.
Need a motion? Motion by Mrs. Love, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Colero, questions? Roll call. Or voice vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero with two absent. Transportation van.
It's recommended that the board approve the purchase of a transportation van from Whiteside Chevrolet that cost $44,353.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Bens?
Yes, motion passes seven zero with two absent.
Your Mrs. Shipley? Mr. Bens?
Yes. Seven zero. New business, St. Vincent Prevention Projects?
It's recommended that the board approve the 2016-2017 service delivery agreement with St. Vincent Prevention Projects.
Need a motion? Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frye, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
As in the past, I think the money can be better used in in-house prevention projects and save us a lot of money, so my vote is no.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Bens?
Yes, motion passes six one with two absent. Work study?
It's recommended that the board approve work discovery agreements with Westmoreland Intermedia Unit for the 2016-17 transition services for students with special needs.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Bens?
Yes, motion passes seven zero with two absent. Scoreboard at Rust Grim Field?
It's recommended that the board accept the donation of materials and labor valued at $8,200 from Westmoreland Electric to upgrade the scoreboard at Rust Grim Field and to approve placing a sign with the Westmoreland Electric logo on the scoreboard in the blank sponsorship space. Just an aside to this motion, if you read the Independent Observer today, the type setter put one extra zero in there and valued this donation at $82,000. It would be nice, but it was $8,200.
Need a motion, please?
Jack, excuse me, before we go, that labor was the labor of the, not necessarily our staff, the labor of the company that's putting...
They will do the job, yes.
Right.
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Polakowski, second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Love, questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Bens?
Yes, motion passes seven zero with two absent. Advertising on athletic venues?
It's recommended that the board authorize administration to explore the use of advertising on district athletic venues and to direct administration to draft a policy governing this practice.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bens?
Yes, motion passes seven zero with two absent. ComDoc?
Administration recommends that this item be tabled. We're still in some legal negotiations about some contract language with ComDoc. And honestly, there were significant issues with copiers today. And we need to explore the direction that we really need to be moving with this, so we're going to recommend that it be tabled.
Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Colero, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions or comments? Can you just give a voice?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero with two absent.
Just as an aside, under administrative content, there is some information there about paper usage in terms of the reductions that have happened over the last four to five years. And also, the device counters that ComDoc supplied to us, as well as some language that you might wanna look at. To find out via email today that sometimes Xerox tends to inflate their usage numbers on their counters. I'm not quite sure how that works yet, I still need to figure all that out. We read that email at about 4:30 this afternoon. So, I think an accurate way to know how much we're using is how much paper are we using as opposed to what those counters say? Because we're obviously buying the paper, you know, that goes through the machine. So, we do know that we used to use about 175 cases of eight and a half by 11 colored. Now we use about 80 cases. We used about 25 cases of eight and a half by 14. That number is about five cases now. And about four years ago, we were using anywhere from 13 to 1500 cases of white eight and a half by 11, using about 1,000 now. So, there has been a reduction in the amount of paper, you know, that's being used over the last several years.
Any questions or comments?
Just to clarify, 1,000 cases is 5 million, because there's 5,000 in a case. But 50, it's 500 per unit, there's 10 rings...
Yeah, 10 rings to a case, right.
5 million copies.
Right.
Okay.
2,000 kids, 180 days. It's a lot, yeah.
Well, actually, if you take all the kids and you take all the employees, it's about 2,200 copies for every student and person that's employed here.
It's a lot of paper.
It is a lot of paper. An awful lot of paper.
Any other questions or comments? PSBA officer elections?
It's recommended that the board by voice vote, casting unanimous ballot for the slate of candidates nominated for office and ship the Pennsylvania School Board Association. President-elect is Michael Fastinetto, Vice President David Hutchison, PSBA Insurance Trust trustee for a term to expire December 31st, 2017. Michael Fastinetto and Mary Ann Neal, PSBA Insurance Trust trustee for a term to expire on December 31st, 2018. Would be William McCaff and PSBA Insurance Trust trustee for a term to expire on December 31st, 2019. Kathy Swope and Mark Miller.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Colero, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frye, questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero with two absent. Need a motion to recess to executive session for personnel?
Litigation concerning personnel employee in Utah versus Southmoreland School District.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? By Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero with two absent. Assistant wrestling coach under personnel?
It's recommended that the board approve Carmen Testa as the assistant high school wrestling coach at a supplemental salary of $3,167.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frye, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Bens?
Yes, motion passes seven zero with two absent. Head varsity golf coach?
It's recommended that the board approve Dave Keefe for his head varsity golf coach at the supplemental salary of $3,329. And that will be prorated so that Mr. Spadero would also receive his share of the salary for the time he coached this year.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Love, questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Bens?
Yes, motion passes seven zero with two absent, resignations?
It's recommended that the board accept the resignations of paraprofessional Tina Petter and long-term substitute teacher Brian Strickler.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Colero, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frye, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Bens?
Yes, motion passes seven zero with two absent. Special education paraprofessionals?
It's recommended that the board employ Debbie Galley as a special education paraprofessional for the 2016-17 school year.
Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Frye, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Colero, questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bens?
Yes, motion passes seven zero with two absent. Halftime Spanish teacher?
It's recommended that the board employ Marine Maserick as a halftime Spanish teacher at a salary of $21,315, which is half of step M1 of the collective bargaining agreement.
Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Colero, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Shipley, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Bens?
Yes, motion passes seven zero with two absent. Long-term science substitute?
It's recommended that the board approve... Hold on one second here. Lost it. It's recommended the board approve Sarah Opalinski as a long-term science substitute at the high school at a salary of $37,630, which is step M1 minus 5,000 per the terms of the collective bargaining agreement.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Bens?
Yes, motion passes seven zero with two absent. Day-to-day substitutes?
It's recommended that the board approve the following individuals as our day-to-day substitute list. Sherry Boone and Deborah Seawalla as substitute nurses. Heidi Fedorko, Sherry Lau and Cynthia... Sherry Lau as substitute secretaries and aides. Cynthia Prinky as substitute cafeteria custodian. And Larry Prinky, substitute custodian.
Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Frye, second.
Second.
Mrs. Shipley, second, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Bens?
Yes, motion passes seven zero with two absent. Volunteer football coach?
It's recommended that the board approve Andrew Polakowski as a volunteer football coach.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Bens?
Yes, motion passes seven zero with two absent. Supplemental resignation?
It's recommended that the board accept the resignation of Christopher Pollard from the supplemental position of BOTS IQ and TSA sponsor and authorized administration to post the position.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Polakowski, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frye, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Bens?
Yes, motion passes seven zero with two absent. Sophomore class sponsor?
It's recommended that the board approve John Saunders as a sophomore class sponsor at the supplemental salary of $853 per the collective bargaining agreement between the Southmoreland School Board and the Southmoreland Education Association.
Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Love, second. Second by Mrs. Shipley, questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bens?
Yes, motion passes seven zero with two absent. Sabbatical league?
It's recommended that the board approve a one-year sabbatical league for the restoration of health for elementary teacher Sharon Gadeski beginning on September 15, 2016, with the caveat that Mrs. Gadeski may return at the beginning of the second semester of the 2016-17 school year if circumstances permit.
Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Frye, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Bens?
Yes, motion passes seven zero with two absent. Long-term substitute teacher?
It's recommended that the board employ Jennifer Stinet of Hunka PA as a long-term substitute effective September 15, 2016 at a salary of $36,060, which is step B1 minus $5,000 as outlined in the collective bargaining agreement between the Southmoreland School Board and the Southmoreland Education Association.
Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Colero, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frye, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Bens?
Yes, motion passes seven zero with two absent. Reports, student report?
I have listed the dates here. Friday, September 9th is the Booster Football Recognition Night against Auburn at 7:00 p.m. Friday, September 3rd is all the head of night against Williamsburg Central High at 7:00 p.m. And Friday, October 28th is the Senior Recognition Night against Mount Pleasant at 7:00 p.m. And on August 30th, this is going back into August, the high school student council assisted freshman orientation. The freshmen students and their parents walk through the high school, open their schedules, and locate their classes and prepare for the freshman high school. Council members, they're going to answer questions about clubs, activities, sports, various classwork, and events. Additionally, they offer tips and ideas for freshmen who are in the transition from middle school to high school, less stressful than work.
Friday, September 9th, I mean, open house for the high school on September 14th. October 7th is our upcoming game against Kentucky at 7:00 p.m. Dollar General, the received foundation recently awarded Reading Buddies program, which is organized in a $2,000 grant to purchase supplies, and all supplies are going to the primary center. And the class of 2017, senior partners, is November.
Thank you.
Thank you.
CWCTC report?
Our meeting was August 17th. The JOC approved four-year compensation plans for assistant director, principal, business manager, building environmental, custodial grounds team, and a six-year plan for the administrative director. They were all retroactive to July 1st. CWCTC entered into a partnership with other regional career centers for a media and marketing program with WTAE TV for one year at a cost of $5,000. I believe there are 11 or 12 career centers involved with this. The idea is to increase interest in CTCs in the area. Linda Yutzi was hired as a cosmetology instructor at a starting salary of $51,400. She is replacing Amy Sasso, who has retired. Three paraprofessionals were hired at the rate of 14, 46 per hour with all applicable fringe benefits. That rate is contingent on current negotiations with the Education Support Personnel Association. Some information coming from the administrative reports. Paving project was able to be completed before school resumed. Four additional office spaces were added. Two in the resource room, two in the guidance room. Protective services area had a full makeover, including walls, doors, and lockers. And the pole building has been started. Bruce and Roger, the maintenance team, wanted everybody to know that this work was all done in-house except for the paving. And these are some results from the National Skills USA competition. The CWCTU robotics team placed sixth in the nation and the automotive team placed 13th. This was a national competition. The team had to qualify at the state level, then the regional level, and then they were able to compete nationally. That concludes my report.
Thank you. WIU report?
We hired a new financial services director, Douglas McCosland. We revised the 2016-17 early intervention calendar. We approved access agreements with seven districts, maybe five, five to seven districts. We approved our compensation plan through 2017. Hired a new tech support for E-Academy, Todd Lance. We recalled another furloughed full-time classroom assistant and recalled 11 part-time classroom assistants from the furlough. Contracted our nurses for the 2016-17 school year and hired a new principal for Clearview, Justine Phillips. That concludes my report.
Thank you. PSBA liaison report is not here, super country report?
Sure, thank you. School's gotten off to a relatively smooth start this year. Buildings were well cleaned and were nicely presented for the beginning of school. As I walked through the halls in each of the buildings on the morning of the first day of classes, I noticed that students were already engaged in meaningful learning. Everybody understands what we're about here, that there's no time to waste. All students were delivered to their homes by 5:00 p.m. on the first day of school, and bus rides have shortened each day since then. Thanks to the transportation department, group transit, along with faculty and staff, Thanks to the transportation department, rooms transit, along with faculty and staff who were diligent to make all of this happen. Our next place this evening is the Workforce Development Forum Dinner in Greensburg. If you're interested in going, please let Peggy know tonight or tomorrow if you haven't already done so. The guest keynote speaker will be Secretary of Education Pedro Rivera. As you're all well aware, some of our neighbors experienced a tragedy recently in floodwaters in Gulf Park and Conneville and Bullskin Township. Jenna Hickson and Caitlin Ziger are spearheading an initiative here in Southmoreland to raise money and assist in those relief efforts. Among other things, there's a Conneville Strong t-shirt sale. If you'd like to order $70 or $12, proceed to go into the relief efforts. Peggy will take your order and your money, by the way. There will be a collection Friday evening's football game to raise cash and Clorox for Conneville. I kind of like that slogan. Random Acts of Kindness Club will also be selling cupcakes for Conneville. Additionally, at the building level, students are participating in a coin boarders contest to raise money. Finally, there will be a gift tree on display. This tree will contain tags and envelopes with gift suggestions for families who lost their homes and everything that was in them. So we would invite any of you who are interested and so inclined to participate in any of those efforts. I'll reiterate what our student reps said. We're pleased to learn that Jenna Hickson received a grant in the amount of two thousand dollars from Dollar General Store. That money will be used to support the Reading Buddies program. You might remember the Reading Buddies helps to put books into the hands of kindergartners and first grade students after high school students have visited the primary center and read the books to the younger students. If you'd like to see this program in action, and I would encourage you to do so, by the way, let me know and I'll make arrangements for you to come and visit when all that's going on. It's kind of a moving, moving experience to watch. I've included an attachment that discusses the substitute teacher shortage across the state of Pennsylvania and some of the steps districts have taken to alleviate the shortage. Much of what you will read mirrors what has happened here at Southmoreland. So far this year, and it is early in the year, by the way, that Southmoreland's fill rates have been at a hundred percent with the exception of two days when one physician was not filled on each of those days. Source for Teachers understands our expectation and we expect a much better performance than we got last year from them. We have received preliminary results from last year's PSSA and Keystone testing. Our overall proficiency rates have improved quite a bit over last year with the exception of one or two areas, and we also exceeded the state average by considerable amounts in all but a couple of areas. I'll give you specific details in an upcoming state of the schools report when we have all the official test scores and school performance profile scores in hand. Last week, some questions arose concerning Southmoreland High School's Positive Behavior Award Program, which has been named the Red and Black Award. Southmoreland High School has implemented this program in order to recognize students in ninth, tenth and eleventh grades for modeling the types of behavior that make our school stand out. Every month, teachers nominate students who are exhibiting positive behavior and doing good deeds. Teachers can nominate students by filling out a nomination form and giving it to the student. The student then drops the nomination form into the designated, lost my space there, bins in the office. At the end of the month, one form from each bin is randomly selected and the student is chosen as the Red and Black Award recipient. Along with this award is also an attendance award. Every student that has attended school every day throughout the month has the opportunity to win. And again, one student is randomly chosen from the list of students who have perfect attendance for the month. Along with the recognition, we reward those students with gift cards donated by the community. Many members of the community have supported the program. This program requires about nine hundred dollars a year to thrive because there are four twenty-five dollar gift cards per month given out. Tonya Sanamon has solicited the local businesses and alumni for the funds and no money comes from the district budget for this program. Each month, the award recipients and their sponsors are listed on the Scotty Channel and on the district website. Their picture along with their sponsor is also placed in the Independent Observer. This year, we'd like to thank our donors and those include Huffman's Auto Body, Rosemary Skaggs and the State Farm Insurance, her agency, Elks Lodge 777, Dr. Jennifer Seawilla Gill, Wise's Restaurant, Dr. Bigley, Pittsburgh Orthodontic Group, Angie Marhefka, who's a thirty-one independent consultant, ALDS Tax Preparation Service, Kalana Designs, Little Learner's Preschool, Carson's Tavern, Carson's Premier Catering, King's Tire, Scottdale Pizzeria, Dr. Williams, Fantastic Sam's, Modern Dimension Salon, Alexander's Pizza, JJ's Pizza and one anonymous donor who donates on behalf of all of you. So we thank all of our sponsors. Received a phone call, it was actually timestamped at 2:00 a.m. Saturday morning and it was on our answering machine when we got to work on Monday morning and it was from the South Parkhead football coach after last Friday night's game. One of South Park's players lost his life last May and there was a ceremony honoring his life at the game between South Park and Southmoreland. The coach thought it was necessary to call us and tell us how much respect and appreciation he has for our coaching staff and our players. During the ceremony, the coaches and students who represented our school showed a great deal of respect toward the memory of the deceased student as well as to the home team and their fans.